That ain't telling me anything.
I'll record it over here.
So, Son is hoping to see the recording of this, but they just contacted you.
Uh, yeah, we'll have to figure out how to get it out there.
Is there anything else?
There should be a file.
Is there anything else we should push?
I don't think there's blinking red.
It says green on, power?
No, it's blinking.
Okay, well, see if it records.
We're good.
Not seeing anybody online.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 3rd meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council. Welcome everybody that is here, and we're gonna start out after the call to order here. Talk about the agenda approval, and I would tell council that J6, we did not get a pay application on it. The most recent pay application on the police station, so that one's been stripped from the agenda. With that, we're ready for our motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda with the correction of J6.
Thank you.
I was second.
Moving second to approve the agenda, with that one adjusted. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And in case anybody's worried, Chris is our marshmallow, so.
Okay.
Excellent. Yeah, we are covered. Communication's part of the agenda. At this point, if you wish to address the city council on subjects pertaining to today's meeting agenda, please wait until that item on the agenda is reached. And if you wish to address the city council on an item not on the agenda, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the public record before discussing, and you've got five minutes to speak. And with that, we open the public comment section.
If I can, real quick, because I know there's some people here in the audience. If you're curious about the proposed flight policy, August 7th will be the meeting that that will be heard at. I didn't want to try and sandwich it in between a holiday because I wasn't sure how many people were traveling. That's why it's not on tonight's agenda. And I will be out of the state for the next council meeting, and my staff asked that I wait till I return. So it'll be on August 7th, if you mark it, Congress, for that.
Thanks for that clarification. Public communication is now open.
So does that mean we can't talk about that today?
No, you can. I just wanted to let you know that you're welcome to talk about it. Debating the merits of that item would probably be best served if you waited till August 7th because that will be the actual time when they have the document in front of them. But you're welcome to speak on anything that's not on the agenda during this period.
Public comment section sessions now open.
Should be a button on top of the microphone if you push that. Very good, thank you. Lots of different mic, too, so on the top, there you go. Should be green.
Can you hear me now?
They'll hear you.
Kurt Hancock, 518 Second Street Northwest, Mount Vernon, Iowa. And I do want to talk about the vote coming up. I don't want to do it in advance, you know, just so that these thoughts are out there to ponder. And so, last meeting, the mayor read and the city council unanimously approved the mayoral proclamation affirming and promoting the LGBTQ plus lifestyle. And soon, as talked about here, the city council will vote on placing MV Loves LGBTQ plus stickers and pride flags on city buildings and city property. Displaying these stickers and flags on city buildings and city property is much more than a statement against bullying or abuse. It is a statement encouraging a specific lifestyle. And the city council and the community needs to be very clear exactly what that lifestyle is. These stickers and flags will be telling our children that the city encourages them to actively participate in the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and plus lifestyle. And this lifestyle has a strong sexual orientation. No matter how we frame it, that is true. This is our city council promoting the sexualization of our children. And is that what the community voted you into office for, to sexualize our children? Please think about what you would be doing. Standing against bullying and abuse is admirable, and I of course support that. But this is not the way to do it. By all standards that this nation was founded on, the sexualization of children is wrong. Please do not make an official government statement that it is acceptable for children to embrace the LGBTQ plus lifestyle, which is encouraging them to be sexually active in the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and plus activities. That is what you will be supporting if you vote to place these stickers and flags on city grounds. Once again, you wouldn't be promoting the sexualization of our children, and please do not do that. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank Mr. Hancock. Does anyone else?
Hello, my name is Lauren Andrews, and I live in Mount Vernon. I wanted to say thank you to the council for the proclamation made at the last council meeting, and to the mayor. The proclamation made was very encouraging for myself and my family and my community. We all appreciate what you have done so far and are grateful that you've heard us and stand behind us at a time when the figurative legislative walls are closing in around us seemingly every day. I look forward to continued and further LGBTQ plus community supportive action in the future. Thank you.
Name is Andrews. Anyone else besides the speaker this time? Yep, Greg.
Hello, my name is Greg Payton. I live at 302 Sixth Street Northeast here in Mount Vernon. Now that June is over, why don't we get back to taking pride in something we should all have pride in this month? These United States of America and the American flag. The American flag and pride in our nation is something that doesn't divide us, but rather unites us. Our request that the council recognizes July as American Pride Month. A good start would be with the mayoral proclamation. It's not fair to just focus on one group, nor does it meet two of the very important parts of the DEI statement regarding one, inclusion, and two, in which everyone is valued. If one belief system is given specific public celebration over others, it would be hypocritical to not allow other belief systems to be celebrated publicly as well. Once you open the door for one group, which you already did, you can't discriminate. Aren't elected officials supposed to be serving all of the community, not just a portion? We've seen at the state and national level how harmful this can be, and this is tearing us apart. Now, if you don't want to proclaim July as American Pride Month, then perhaps you need to reconsider the DEI statement and the LGBTQ plus proclamation from June. I say this because the city does not want to open the door for radical or racist groups to ask for flags or symbols of their own to be flown. Proclamations are traditionally non-controversial and non-devise. Just because other cities think it's a cool thing to do now, doesn't mean we have to copy them. I would like to think we have a different vision here in Mount Vernon, and that's why so many people want to come here. What about Black History Month, Women's History Month, Asian History Month? Do you not want those groups to feel included? The following are all national celebrations. Therefore, shouldn't they be recognized by the city to keep things fair? Assuming the city council would not want anyone to be feeling left out, perhaps we can also look into proclamations for the following after we get July recognized as American Pride Month. February, like I said, these are all national, could be Black History Month. March could be Women's History Month. April could be Sexual Assault Awareness and Profession Month and Arab-American Heritage Month. May could be Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and Mental Health Awareness Month. June, we already have LGBTQ plus Pride Month. July, Disability Pride Month. September, Latinx Heritage Month. October, LGBTQ plus History Month and National Disability Employment Awareness Month. November, National American Heritage Month. Now, time to circle back since I still have a little bit of time remaining. First, can we start getting the agenda posted in a timely manner? As of 6:00 PM, June 20th, the agenda for the June 19th meeting was still not accurate. It showed that the agenda was posted on June 16th, and it still says that today, but four days later, there was still no mention of the Pride mayoral proclamation. As a matter of fact, it stated "none" following sex and age mayoral proclamation. This is not transparency, nor did it follow Iowa Code Chapter 21 and Chapter 22, which in Iowa, open meeting and open record laws. City council meetings, meeting agendas must provide sufficient detail for the public to know specific actions to be taken and matters to be discussed. The date, time, place, and agenda must be posted at least 24 hours before the meeting in a public place, which obviously, even 24 hours after the meeting, they were still not posted.
Actually, Greg, I'm gonna stop you right there, because yes, it was. It's at City Hall, and it's in the last case up there where they always are.
Okay, I was on the actual City Hall website.
The website is not illegal. You're gonna keep interrupting me, the website is not legal. The case upstairs is where it needs to be posted 24 hours in advance, and it was.
Okay, well, I was aware of that. Let's learn, I guess. All right. I was gonna mention the paper there, because I know it was in the paper on June 15th, but I didn't want that coming. Second, why is the MBL, or Mount Vernon Loves LGBTQ plus sticker still on a city building? This has been brought to your attention, and for the third time now, and approaching one month this week. If I go there tomorrow, will they put up a sticker of my choosing? How about a specific political candidate? A specific religious affiliation, military organization, racial pride, sexual preference, national origin, or familial status? What about if I ask to have an abortion sticker put up such as the heartbeat bill? You see what this is all about? Anybody can come in at any time, since you've opened that door. Stop requesting these things be put up. In all reality, the only flags and symbols we should be flying or displaying on city property are those which are of our city, state, or nation. Only the American flag, the flag of the state of Iowa, the city flag, the prisoner of war flag, and the nation's flags that represent the character of our nation should be flown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. Anyone else like to speak this time?
My name is Whitney Turner, I live in Mount Vernon. I would just like to say I appreciate the support for all of our community during Pride Month with the proclamation. I'm a teacher, I'm a parent, and my kids know that they're safe in our community, and it's just very important to us. So I just want to say I really appreciate that extra support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Anyone else like to speak this time?
I would. Grant Jamie Robinson, I live at 218 First Avenue Northeast in Mount Vernon. I'm here to support the flags, the 11 commemorative flags policy. I believe there are 11 commemorative flags proposed. That would be veterans and military families, disability employment awareness, mental health awareness, LGBTQ pride, Asian Hawaiian Pacific Islander heritage, Arab-American heritage, Native American heritage, Hispanic American heritage, Black History Month, Women's History, or Black History, Women's History of 19th. So I think that's 11 commemorative flags that the city is proposing to fly here as a city. So I support that, and I'm hoping to hear more about it at future meetings. I just need to give you a little background on why I support this position the city may be taking. And if someone asks, what's the value of reading or writing or communication skills? You could answer, so it's you could serve on your city council or your school board, or you could prepare notes to speak in front of your school board or your city council. I am here to support the 11 commemorative flags policy. I went to public schools, and it was a bumpy ride. Childhood and adolescence are a bumpy ride, generally speaking, because growing up means conforming to adult rules and guidelines. As an adult, I understand that for rules and guidelines for councils, for supervisors, for bosses, for local police, for speed limits, rules at my bank, rules at my doctor's office, legislation that bans books. No, 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 I don't support that. I grew up in a house full of books and read them without any, without being told that I couldn't read those books. And librarians found books for me, they didn't hide books from me. A book I read multiple times throughout life is The Catcher in the Rye. Holden, the narrator of that book, shows us a world where adults are uninvolved or detached, and children are destined to literally fall off a cliff to their peril if not for someone to catch them, The Catcher in the Rye. That message still applies. I earned a teaching degree at University of Iowa and learned that every child, every adolescent is someone to respect and to meet them where they are. That everyone learns at their own pace, and to respect that. And I learned that the greatest predictor of a child's success is that child has at least one person who loves them or cares for them unconditionally. Public education started when European settlers decided that literacy was valuable for more than just a select few educated men. And public education has grown to be so much more, and we're still learning. People who choose professions in education have more, than some of us, more of the pea pie, piece of the pie, than others. And more of us are hungry, so to speak. If the Constitution is your primary guide, consider that it was not written for who we are now. And that might make us uncomfortable. But life is uncomfortable, and we are here to make life better, not worse. I survive things I wouldn't wish on anyone, and I take lessons learned and turn them into compassion and love to have someone's back. Who has had my back? My grandma Olive, my uncle Tim, a high school friend, a teacher, my mom, my husband. I've had my son's back, and my daughter's back, and my own back when no one else had it. So every day should be an effort to empathize with someone, to pay it forward. Less me, more we. And this is why I support the 11 commemorative flags policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent. Anyone else like, come on up, Jared, yes.
Jerry Niedher, Alder 306, East Fourth Street, Mechanicsville. I feel like I was invited to this party by the proclamation thing about city surrounding communities. I just have, I wasn't gonna speak tonight. Somebody just stood up and said, "The Constitution of the United States was not written for such a time as this." For such a time as this is exactly why the Constitution of the United States exists. And we're gonna find out what's gonna happen with it. My day was written exactly for where we are right now, that we are at an impasse. I don't hate anybody. I disagree with a lot of you. You disagree with me? I've got friends that aren't talking to me because I got a friend spoke two weeks ago. So we had, I knew it was gonna happen.
Mayor, if I may, could I ask that this be? Surely.
I'm okay with that.
To what is this to the discussion before the city? This isn't a national debate that we're having.
Except it is, Paul.
Not here, sir. Thank you.
Understood, understood. But I just, when I heard that, and I...
So, Jared, just one quick question.
Yes.
Because I respect you a lot. I've sat up here with you.
I know, yeah.
And you are a very intelligent man who I've learned a lot from. Why did the founders allow for the Constitution to be amended if it was written to be static in time?
It was amended and approved through the proper process. And we're in the process of doing that today. There's things today that are allowed in our country that...
So, my point is, I agree to disagree with your statement that it was written exactly for today.
That's fine. I disagree.
Because it allows for change.
It does.
Because the founders were smart enough to know that they didn't know everything.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
And so, we should not feel like we know everything today either. And I certainly don't think that I know everything, okay?
Yes.
But you just, you just said, "Let's not have this discussion," and then you opened up that question.
I did.
And I'm just gonna walk away.
I appreciate it.
Okay, but August 7th or whatever's coming. I'm on everybody's side, I just want a civil society, and you know what? The last time I went up there and spoke, it was in October, a couple years ago. I went up there and spoke about masks. It was very embarrassing. And I sat down, and Tom, you made a comment about that you didn't believe a word I said. And I said, "I know, and that's okay." But I would say that if anybody's paying attention to what's going on in the world, they've got us fighting over everything. Red, blue, black, white, female, non-female, all of this stuff, and they're destroying our culture. We're feeding right into it. Here we are. Here we are, we can't even be in the room with each other, and it just gets flattered up. And it's too bad, but it's reality, and we need to have a discussion. And thank you, Jared.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Niedherhauser.
Pardon me?
I said, "Thank you for your comments." I know I've opened the door for this to be a little bit too late, but I think we need to try to keep it focused on the traditional public comment sections with the five minutes, and listen to the speaker, and vote by that as much as possible. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Welcome, Mrs. Keith.
Chris Keith, 110 Crestview Drive here in town. As a retired teacher, parent, and grandparent, I just want to say tonight, thank you to the city council for supporting all our community members. It's very easy for those of us standing in a majority to think that these efforts of recognizing all in our community would not be necessary. So I do appreciate the effort you put in to make our young people and adults here in Mount Vernon know that they're a part of this community. Thank you.
Mr. Keith. Is anyone else that'd like to speak at this time? Anybody else? We'll close the public comment section of the meeting then, and move on to consent agenda. We've got two items on the agenda with appointment and approval minutes. Whoever has a chance to approve, that goes out?
I'm agreeing with approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you for that. I'm a second.
I'm second.
Okay, good. Moving second to approve the consent agenda, all favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public carrying, public carrying for the consideration of a voluntary annexation application for property owned by Troy and Tracy Lawagi and CTM Holdings LLC to the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Chris, do you have anything to supplement your...
So the annexation application is actually 100% voluntary. It involves two landowners. The largest tract owned by CTM Holdings is adjacent to Springville Road, and actually goes, would make up the southeast quarter of Springville Road and Abbey Hills Road. There are two parcels, two smaller parcels that have already been carved out of that ground, but they are asking to annex the remainder in. In an effort to get to that parcel, Troy and Tracy Lawagi were approached about the potential to bring in property to connect the city limits to this parcel, and they agreed. As I pointed out in my report, I think it's important to understand, as in Lawagi's case, the city could have taken 20% of the total number of acres that CTM brought in and still considered a voluntary annexation sale. It could have annexed a portion of the Lawagi's property without consent, and still kept it voluntary in nature. Troy and Tracy Lawagi's property would come in as ag. The property owned by CTM Holdings would come in as potential business park, a mix of two, a business park and ag. City does have water on that side of the tract, it does not have sewer. Currently, I have no plans that have been submitted on behalf of CTM Holdings as far as what is going on. I just know that the indications are not residential.
Mr. Hoffman, you had asked a question earlier about actually seeing the visual. Do you understand where it is?
Yeah, it's on my east side, and then my north side, my property.
As long as you have a visual now of where that is, okay.
But, you know, I have a lot of questions. I mean, Chris, you opened up one. You know, you're talking about you could have annexed through the 80/20 rule, but were the Lawagis kind of threatened with that? Or, you know, that's how your statement come out.
No, they understood that the city could have if they chose to.
I know, but that's kind of...
But the conversation with the Lawagis was not threatening at all.
You know, it kind of sounds like it was, but... And my question is, what services will they provide? How will they get provided? Like the sewer services, you got Six Inch Main out there. Goes to the end of that property there, you know, the last property you have in Mount Vernon. I mean, you're gonna provide water across there, prick and everything, plus sewer, and you're gonna pump it back to the city subject, or the city system?
There's a difference between a voluntary annexation and an involuntary annexation.
I understand that.
An involuntary annexation requires the city to provide services within three years. A voluntary annexation simply requires the city to show that they can provide services to that area. As far as answering that question, it will depend specifically on what they decide or propose, and what those needs are, as to whether or not it makes fiscal sense for the city to extend services to that, or if they look at what is currently done in the county or the subject or well.
Well, and the reason I ask this is I was involved in involuntary annexation in the 80s. And, you know, and then I come to the city and asked to develop some land, and they said, "Well, we're not gonna bring sewer, and at that time, we're gonna bring you water." And I said, "Well, they can put wells in." And then they said, "Well, we're not gonna okay subject tanks." So it's like, then I ended up in a quandary that I couldn't do anything. And I want, you know, if the city's got intentions of annexing that, there's obviously some development in mind, and so services will have to follow. And will that include maintenance of Abbey Hills Road, the gravel road, to the north of the... to the north of the proposed annexation? And will it include maintenance on the Springville blacktop also?
So those will be done by 2080, because you know as well as I do, in the county, you're annexing to the center line essentially of those properties. So typically, it'll be a 2080 agreement between the city and the county, which we already have, so it'll just be an extension of that as far as road maintenance goes. And again, as far as services being provided, we can put a number to both the revenue potentially generated based upon the end use that comes out and obviously the cost of putting services out there. And the city will have to determine at that point whether or not it makes sense to extend the services for what is being developed or not. Or if and when it should be determined to do that. Water's easy. It's already over on that side. Sewer's obviously more difficult because of the tracks.
Well, I don't wanna say I'm against it, but I don't know enough about what's going on is the problem.
Well, and I don't have, that's why I say I don't have a definitive application for what the individual would like to do. All I have is the application for voluntary annexation, which is what I have to act on it from. Knowing that he's looking at business park, I can tell you it is probably jobs-related. But I don't have a building permit application or a site plan application or anything of that nature to say this is what this individual is going to do. I've spent enough time in other places in Iowa to know that the annexation will come, and then the development plan will probably change two to three times before they actually move forward with something.
Chris, is your purpose for having this on the agenda to set the date for public hearing?
No, this is the purpose.
This is a public hearing.
Yeah, this is the time to ask.
I mean, you're gonna ask for passing the resolution later tonight. And to me, I just don't, I don't know enough to make whether I even like it or I don't like it. I mean, I'm not gonna stand in the way of progress, but yet I don't wanna be looking at something north of me like a sewer plant or have you guys drill a well and dry up my well? Because that's happened already.
So, no. The current sewer plant operates at about 50% capacity, so even with this annexation and a few more acres, and by a few more, I mean a few hundred acres, we would still be well within our capacity. Water is the same way. In order to get another source of water, we would probably have to go south, not north.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I just wanna know more so I can make an educated...
So I can tell you this. The only proposal that the individual has remotely talked about is one building. It's research space, it's job space, and it wouldn't be a large burden on any system, let alone a septic or well if they chose to do that. But that is the amount of detail that I have, only because I asked, obviously, why they wanna go to business park when they come in. The one thing I would say is business park does require an additional subdivision. It will require a number of other approvals that will come along with this outside of the annexation. And again, right now, the merits of whether or not the ground coming into the city is what the annexation request is currently about.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. Because this is a voluntary annexation, it doesn't lock the city into actually doing anything with the land in any sort of, to your point, if it were involuntary, within three years, you would have to run services and that sort of thing.
It locks you into being able to show that you could provide services.
Which we can, because we already have, right.
As Mr. Hoffman pointed out, water being a six-inch line, that's not too terribly challenging. Sewer could be, whether or not it's a horse main or a lip face.
But it doesn't say that we have to do anything within X number of months or years or whatever.
No, and the city, like any other development, can, you know, require the developer to upfront most of those costs, or they can enter in a partnership on the cost of that infrastructure. In this situation, likely, everybody that would be able to connect to this infrastructure would be notified.
It's all ag land, so you can't assess it.
Well, but I mean, anybody that currently has a home out there would be contacted to let them know. They would be allowed to hook to our system. But again, we can count the number of end users and the gallons that are predicted to be used by the end user and whether or not it merits, you know, for instance, it's a half million dollars to put water in the sewer just under the bypass, just to get it under the bypass.
And by annexing it into the city, we then place the processes that the city has in place for doing development and other things out there within normal subdivision and the planning and zoning, all of the other groups that we jump through.
We have two miles. And we do have, I will tell you, we have another property that is going through the same process. They're deciding whether or not they want to remain in the county or try to annex into the city. Neither of which I would have predicted. Mount Vernon has been a square for a very long time, so...
Well, I'm not saying, I mean, I've talked to the gentleman. I like what he's planning, but I would like to know that the city is receptive to spending the money, the capital it takes to bring services out there. That's what I'm asking, and maybe that's, I mean, I think that that is a fair question with the things I've went through, you know? Instead of getting into a situation where, "Oh, well, you can't do this and you can't do that." And it's like, well, then you've ended up, you can't go anywhere.
No, so to answer your question, is the city willing? Yes. As long as you do your due diligence and make sure that it pencils out. I don't want to burden the rest of the citizens in Mount Vernon to pay for services that may not be recuperated for 30 or 40 years. That wouldn't make any sense. Now, it can still be annexed in, and we could consider that for future developments. But even if they develop out there, there may or may not be a need for immediate city services or not. Water would probably be the most immediate, because typically buildings and business parks require sprinkler suppression systems. So even if they do a kind of a hybrid wet-dry system, they'll likely want water. So I would say water's probably more likely in the immediate future. Sewer will take some time. But to your no. Obviously, I wasn't here in the 80s, but I mean, I don't know what the reasoning behind what they told you.
Well, it was the city engineer, just Dan Boggs at that point in time. And he says, "Well, septic systems aren't safe, so I'm not gonna approve it." And that was the end of discussion.
So I can tell you the other parcel that I'm working with right now. There's alternative methods to just individual septic systems for everybody.
I know, that's another...
I know you're probably not in the mood to have that conversation, but I'm glad to speak with you.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I can't offer you too much on that, but if you're willing to sit down and have more conversation about it.
Well, I'm not against the project. I mean, I think it would be a nice project for City of Mount Vernon. Not against it. I just want, you see what I said I wanted, you know? And then that's a hard thing, because we both know that running sanitary out there, sewer, is gonna be expensive. Going onto the railroad tracks and going approximately a mile and dealing with the crick. And I don't see a lot of people connecting. You might, you know, there's probably three or four that will connect. The rest are fairly new, so I don't see them wanting to.
No, and I would say most likely, if we were to extend sewer, the largest potential would be to try and get it down Skobe to connect to the police station to some point, the PD could be off a septic as well. But again, I can tell you, I'm not right at this moment, but if you talk to me in the office, I can tell you about how much a single-family home of four will generate in revenue from both sewer and water, and we can pencil that out. Like I said, water's probably more likely of the two. Sewer will take some time, unless, for some reason, Collins Aerospace decided to build something larger, which isn't going to happen, but...
Yeah, don't write that down.
But, you know, if there were a significant building with a lot of properties access came and they were high end user, then yeah, we would have to consider it.
So, let me speak.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Craig, it's good to see you again.
Yes.
I was here, not in the 80s, but at the time you were evaluating that. And so I have an understanding of your concerns, and I share those. Frankly, when this first came to me, I considered what that involved and share a lot of the same questions. The unfortunate thing is this ask is to be annexed into the city. I will tell you that based upon my past experience, I will approach, if I'm still on council and involved, I will certainly approach the process much differently than I did the last time. I would like to think that I'm wiser and more knowledgeable today than I was then. Because that's an important thing, that as these things progress, any development, be it residential, business park, unfortunately, as a council, we are often burdened by decisions made by those prior councils. This is an excellent example of that. Because if I, and whoever has greater knowledge than I of history, I believe the involuntary annexation was done in the 70s, and the proverbial can on services was just kicked down the road to the point that we are where we are.
We never had any services.
Right.
None, zero. Still haven't got them, really.
So I can tell you that I will, even if I'm not on council, I will advocate to whatever council is in place, that we do our due diligence and fully understand what is going on. It doesn't answer your question, but it tells you you have an advocate today on council, tomorrow, at least in the community. And I really appreciate your attendance and you asking these questions, because it's very important. I would have appreciated both from a city administrative perspective and from a resident citizen perspective, landowner, better knowledge in advance of your proposals at that time. So, thank you.
Paul, public hearing is still open for this 150-acre Polish annexation. Anybody else that wants to speak to that topic? Are you done? I'm not sure I officially opened the public hearing, but should I now officially close it? Anybody else here comment about that annexation? I'll officially close the public hearing. And what is the rule of the council on this action? Moving forward, we'll move for the resolution. Put a resolution down. Roll call vote eventually.
Just to note that, I don't know if it matters or not, that Troy Lawagi's name is spelled incorrectly on page 11.
Yes, the attorney provided it as the resolution.
How do you want to deal with the resolution?
I would move approval of resolution 7-3-2023B, approving the voluntary annexation of property set forth within the paperwork attached.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded to move forward, it's resolution for voluntary annexation of a noted property. This is a roll call vote on this resolution, so I will ask you to call the roll, Chris.
Herman?
Yes.
Turner? Rose?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to further resolution for approval. Streetlights within Stonebrook Seventh Edition, Phase Two.
This is Alliance, well, the developers request through Alliance. Alliance requires a formal resolution to be adopted. There are three streetlights that are being proposed in a Seventh Edition, Phase Two. So it would be one light at the intersection of 16th Place and Fifth Street West. For those that are familiar with Stonebrook, that would be where the existing park is proposed, which is just on the north side where the street comes into that. And then third...
I apologize. So the park is proposed where 16th kind of dead ends on what order?
16th Place stop, right where the five acres the city owns. The other light would be Third Avenue and 16th Place, which would be on the Third Avenue side at that intersection. And then what amounts to approximately 300 feet down Third Avenue South. So those would be the black lights. Three lights total. Developers cover those costs of installation. The city is responsible once they are approved for basically the light bulb.
Thank you, Chris. Roll minor, but on the resolution, on the page 14, it says a 24-inch fiberglass pole. Then later, it says 24-foot. I wondered if they were gonna be two feet. But then on page 16, it says 24-feet, so just...
Let's assume that's...
I'm on the Marty. She's using my...
Got a resolution. Blame the engineers.
Absolutely.
Got a resolution for three streetlights within Stonebrook Seventh Edition, Phase Two subdivision. Any further questions, staff?
Move approval of resolution number 7-3-2023A, approving the installation of streetlights within the Stonebrook Seventh Edition.
Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving seconded to move forward. Phase Two, three streetlights in Stonebrook Seventh Edition. If there are no further questions, we're gonna call the roll. Please, Chris.
Turner?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution carries. Basically taking care of G2, I believe. To G3. Instruction bids for the Kermit Cutter Project Candlestick.
I'm gonna start by saying I'm absolutely done trying to figure out whether or not bids are going to come in low or high. So...
Low.
The engineer's estimate for this project was $220,000. The low bid was $163,170.
Good, 25%.
Yeah, and Boomerang would be the winning bidder. And every bid that we've had prior to this, they were high.
Boomerang's in town.
B&amp;K did provide a report and recommended approval. This has been on the CIP for five years. Franchise fees would be used to cover the cost of this project.
So council's will on this resolution?
I'll move approval of resolution 7-3-2023C, accepting the bid, the low bid, from Boomerang for $163,070 for the Candlestick project.
Thank you, Deb. Is there a second?
Second.
Gotta give it to Craig. It's his area, right? Moving seconded to move forward for the resolution of the Kermit Cutter Project Candlestick Drive. If there are no further questions, all favor of that motion? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving to motions for... Resolution passes. Moving to motions for approval. Uh, goes this addendum. Claims list now today, I believe. If I have a chance to take a look at that and ready to move forward with it.
Unless there are questions, I would move approval of claims list as presented.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Paul, moving seconded to move forward with the new claims list that came out today. This is an acclamation vote. If you're all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Latest from Iowa DOT on Highway one, twenty twenty-five or twenty-six.
This is a slightly random. Reach out from the Iowa Department of Transportation. For all those that are familiar, Highway one is currently receiving some patchwork. Our assumption when we got on the conference call that they were going to continue that patchwork throughout the community and then of course north of Mount Vernon. Instead. They stated that they have a new program. And if the city is willing to do the design work for the reconstruction of Highway one, the DOT would cover the cost of. Repaving. Any scrub drain work and any subsurface work that needed to be done on Highway one. And then. Any sidewalk work that was adjacent to that property. So if there was ADA not compliant, then they would cover some of those costs. Another one of those deals that wasn't necessarily on the CRP, CIP or plan, but kind of too good not to pass it up.
Feels like that paving of Mount Vernon rode a while back.
Yeah, uh, if we were to get Highway one reconstructed. Obviously that would take care of the two, two of the three major materials that are our responsibility. So. First is half done. We will be talking about the downtown and the remainder of it. Highway one and Business thirty. I will say. Because we are doing the design work, we are allowed to seek other grant funding sources. So say for us the school. I would love to get the intersection at Fourth and Highway one to a more permanent solution outside of pushing a stop sign in and out. Uh, I, I give the school a lot of credit for doing that in and out every day, but a more permanent solution would be, be wonderful. And then on the north side, we've bounced around the thought now that we have more property developing in and around Elliott. If there is potential for a turn lane on Seventh, that we can give access to both that subdivision and Elliott Park. The priority for me would still be Fourth and Highway one. But. Uh, we had, uh, B and K was on the conference call. They would do the design work. Project itself probably wouldn't be bid until twenty twenty-six. The construction would start twenty twenty-seven. I will tell you right now and everybody in the audience, it will be a disruption for a year. It won't be pretty. It will not be fun. It will, will be a full reconstruction. So you're not going to be traveling on Highway one, at least. My assumption they would do at a minimum in two phases, maybe four. But with that being said, once it's done, the city wouldn't have to worry about it for another twenty plus years.
So we've been talking about the roundabout and having some remodeling done to the roundabout, and that is also for the DOT.
That's already programmed. The DOT.
So that's going to happen first?
Yes.
Well before twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven.
The DOT awarded themselves a grant.
Well, but I'm glad you asked because that was my exact question. If we're starting the roundabout, how about getting those things done that they told us they would do regarding.
So that project will be done for, that project is already moving forward. It's designed, it's been approved, it's just waiting on their budget cycle, which is different than ours. For those that are home, it's going to a one lane all the way around. So it's no longer two lane, two lane, one and one. But, um, yeah, so that, that project will happen before this, this occurs. That's a little less disruptive because most of it's median work and painting, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
And just to confirm, this would cover all of Highway one within the city limits, north and south?
To the tracks.
Almost, yeah, there's, there'll be a portion just north of the tracks that I don't know that they're going to.
Probably would not touch. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Do you live on Highway one? So does that mean the highway will be widened?
No. That was one of the specifications from the DOT is they are going to work specifically within the confines of the current road surface. And the reason for that is. There's a lot of houses on Highway one that are less than fifteen feet off. The right away as it is and you do not want to get into a situation, nor does the city go purchasing additional right away. To that area. The recommended speed limits on Highway one through town. Are already low enough that it doesn't need to be wider, but doesn't. I don't expect anything that to occur. If anything's going to happen outside of the current road system, it'll be on the intersections.
And then people's sidewalks will be improved too? We already had ours done, but.
Not all the sidewalks. So the DOT was very specific in that as the sidewalk meets the intersection, the ADA compliance. I will say the city already has money earmarked for additional sidewalk work. So. I would imagine there'll be a lot of discussion on that moving forward because there are sidewalks that will be very difficult to meet ADA requirements. So there will be some waivers that will have to be applied for.
Sure, I understand since you're locked into the twenty twenty-seven for the actual construction, the engineering process.
Yeah, I, so the reason this is on the agenda tonight is obviously this would be a big project. I mean, north of six million dollars, not necessarily for us, but for the DOT. But. Before I indicated to the DOT that we would be interested. I wanted to make sure that the council was on board with this project. If they are, DOT still has an internal process that they have to go through. It will probably take three to six months before we know that this is going to move forward and on their program.
So, so what are you asking us to do? To say, move forward on this?
I, I didn't want you to kill me if I said yes and then came back and said, hey, by the way, we're going to tear Highway one in twenty twenty-seven.
And then downtown in the same year.
Yeah, so that's the other part to this. Right.
One impacts the other.
We are going to, we are going to.
Depending on how they plan it as well.
The RFP for the rest of the downtown streetscape will go out this summer. With that being said. That project will be affected by this project because the detours that are going to be necessary, we can't close both.
I'd, I'd also just, the British, remind council that, of the statement that the project design would likely start. And in my experience, it's a very important statement.
It's a big window.
Yes, because back in two thousand, the Highway thirty bypass was on the five year plan. And in two thousand and one, it was gone for. Twenty years, yes.
So. Just not, not that I'm advocating this, but I'm just curious. So they, they came to us asking, saying, if you, if you do the, if you pay for the design work, we'll redo the road. Aren't they going to redo the road at some point anyway? So what happens if we say no, we don't want to pay for the design work?
If, if they add the design work, they do the design work in-house typically. This will hasten the programming for this project. My estimates by at least three to five years.
Does it theoretically give us some more?
Yeah, you know, the road use tax money is, is, they have an allocated amount every year and they have those program dollars. So much of those, that money has to go to. Refurbishing existing highways. This would move it along faster.
But I would also like to add that the ability to, by us participating, the ability to apply for grant funding. For example, the safe routes to schools.
Sure, oh, yeah, there's a, yeah, I just, I was curious as to, you know, if we say no, what, you know.
Now, I, you know, the DOT would probably go ahead and carve it up a little bit more and repatch like they have over, you know, just north of the areas. Doesn't look pretty.
There will be pain on both projects.
So what do you need us to do?
I would move approval of city staff cooperating or collaborating with the Iowa DOT on the Highway one. Reconstruction.
Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
You will vote on an engineering.
Yeah.
First of many votes.
This is probably, for the public, is probably the biggest thing and inform council about this major change. We've got a motion of support basically on the Highway one partnership with the Iowa DOT. On moving seconded, ready to vote on that. That is an acclamation vote. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Pay application one on Palisades Road Overlay. Project's just about done?
It is just about done and. Did I, was I able to send that to you in a separate email from B and K? I did. And a flurry of emails coming in and going out, so I just wanted to make sure. Um, yeah, obviously the road is complete. For those that had an opportunity to go down there while it was under reconstruction. You can see what staff was referring to. There was visually, you can see portions of clay. It's not an ideal situation putting asphalt right on the top of a dirt base, but without spending a significant amount more money. There is approximately four inches of asphalt, so. While it won't be a twenty to twenty-five year road service, it should be fifteen to twenty as long as we continue to access it, so.
Paul?
I had the opportunity to drive Palisades Road prior to the meeting and I was very pleased with the work done. And I would move approval of. Pay application number one for the Palisades Road Overlay.
I'll second that. Paul Craig, moving seconded to move forward with pay application number one on the Palisades Road Overlay project. Any other questions or discussion? All ready to vote on that? All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pay application number five on the public works facilities. So the doors are on, it's getting pretty close to being done.
Yeah, this would be the last pay application outside of the contingency. So fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Is there a key to walk out there yet with the, just to see?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. I would, um. I would encourage you to do it during business hours so that, so that staff are not wondering who's wandering through the buildings, but. There really, there's nothing located out there right now, but I would encourage you to go out there, take a look at the buildings and then. The grinding, the, the milling from Palisades is actually what makes up the base surrounding the buildings and that will be pavement of some sort in the future.
Open up a transition date?
I don't yet. The north building will have a concrete floor that will get poured. So that there is more, a more usable space. The second building does not currently have a planned concrete floor. The staff is going to pour that. When time becomes available, resources are available. So. Technically speaking, some of the outdoor equipment that we have sitting by the pool could start to move in to. The south building.
I have a grandson that would be very disappointed that those John Deere's. Just for the record. I would move to approve pay application number five for the public works facility, fifty-five thousand, one thirty-nine.
I'll second that.
Craig and Scott, moving seconded to move forward to pay application number five. It'd be great to close up that project. Ready to vote on it? All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Change order number four on the police station renovation.
So this change order was in the amount of thirty-three hundred dollars and sixty-six. The doors that were specified in the building specifications do not match for the rest of the doors that were there for some reason. Staff did have to approve this one. I would still ask that we formally vote on this, but we did have to approve it. There's a six week, six week lead time on the doors in order to stay on schedule. There's another situation if you're out and about and want to go take a look at public works and then stop out at PD and take a little tour with, with chief during the week. The interior is now framed, so you can get a handle on how that interior space is going to be subdivided.
Stuffing guns still have end of December?
So they say.
They're saying it less, but yes.
All right, I will move to approve change order number four for the police station renovations of the thirty-three hundred and sixty dollars.
Seconded by Dan. Moving seconded to move forward, change order number four on police station. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six was dropped. Change order number one on the Palisades Road Overlay project.
So overall, the project actually decreased by about ten thousand. And the reason for that is the segment from fifteenth to. Business thirty, they did not actually know that. The surface was sound enough that they felt that it was probably the best just to go ahead and asphalt over that. So there was a small reduction in asphalt. There was. An increase in asphalt where they did mill reduction. All in all, the project was about ten thousand dollars. So by approving the change order, you just prove that there's an increase in contract.
That was a contractor renovation too, wasn't it?
It was, uh, after an onsite meeting.
Great.
In that case, I'll go ahead and move approval of a change order number one for the Palisades Road Overlay project.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
I'll take it down on that. Moving seconded to move forward on that change order number one on the Palisades Road Overlay project. If there are no further discussions or questions, all favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports, L V S.
All right, I, I'm really just here for if you guys have any questions. You should have gotten the, the entire report and then there's some highlights that were included in the packet. So overall, we were very happy with the consultant we worked with. Actually came out to the site, I believe interviewed most, if not all of you. Kind of about the service and what we provide in, in the next, you know, ten to thirty years really, so.
You will receive the full report separately. They got the highlights, Jake. They didn't get the full report with, with this packet, but you will get it this week.
Yeah, so, and, and the gist of it is, is the building isn't hampering our response, which is good, but it's not necessarily helping. You know, there's about four months of the year that we don't have to lug bags back and forth with our, our paramedic response car. Since that's sitting outside, we're seeing some, some decal issues, things like that. Fairly minor issues, but still it's, it's going to impact the longevity of those vehicles. The biggest issue comes when we start looking at storage. And as we're looking ahead at DEA, DEA and Iowa Board of Pharmacy requirements, what we're going to have to do to, to be. Compliant with that as far as locks and, and security cameras, things along that nature. So. That's a big consideration. The, the consultant kind of laughed off that our, our percentage of growth has been averaging sixteen percent. Saying that we're probably not going to continue to see that and, and we're still at that today. I just ran the, the latest report, so we're a little above sixteen percent. So with the, the last half of our year, typically the busier half. So we are growing, the community is growing and, and obviously we're going to grow along with that, so.
And in the scope of the assessment, it's supposed to be facilities related, but were there any peripheral items that came up from the consultants?
Yeah, so there were some elements. One of the biggest things with EMS right now is, is financial sustainability. As most of you probably don't know, or maybe you do. We are. Basically at the, the mercy of our payer group. Luckily, in our community, we have a fairly healthy payer group. That's pretty traditional in the Midwest and Mount Vernon's is actually even a little bit better. But the bill that we send out isn't the bill that, isn't, isn't what we get paid. Um, but the bill that we send out isn't the bill that, isn't, isn't what we get paid. Um, there are some supplement programs that are, are available for municipal services that aren't available for nonprofits, which is what we would be coded as. Um, and, and the biggest one is the ground emergency medical transport legislation that provides a supplement to Medicaid patients because they're, they only cover approximately twelve percent of, of cost. Um, or of the bill that's sent out. Um, so the supplement is meant to bring that up to, to our cost of business. Uh, there is some talk, I actually have a meeting with the state and the Iowa EMS Association um, about the state opening that up to nonprofits, which would obviously be a huge help to our service, um, as well as many in the area. And, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of conversations about that. They looked at our, our operations as far as a lot of the extra services we provide, whether it be the paramedic intercepts to other ambulance services, as well as over the last few years, the interfacility transfers, um, that we do to, to back up Anamosa as well as Iowa City and occasionally Cedar Rapids. So seeing where that's, is that helping or hurting us as far as coverage goes, financial aspects, things like that? Trying to keep the bulk of the, the cost off the taxpayers and off the city. So, but that was, that was a very minor part of the study, obviously. Um, but it definitely plays into the bigger idea of what will we need in the, the future for resources as far as, and what is the space needs gonna be for that?
Thanks, Jake. Any questions? Jake Wollins here. Look forward to the, the full report, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, it's very good, so.
Uh, reports. Mayor, Council Administrator.
Thank you, Jake. Mayor's report, I'll just add three things basically. I'll turn it over to Craig here. Um, one was, um, it's signed for the Lega City's Mayor's Convention, could be in Cedar Rapids, middle of September, I think, so I'm gonna attend that. Um, been having discussions with, um, legislation change with, um, having to pay tax on, um, the car charging station, even though we give the, the charge away free of the, the two that are the building over here. Um, we need some way to monitor and pay that two point, two point six cents kilowatt hour to Department of Revenue with Iowa. So quick answer, maybe taking them off the building. So, uh, that's not gonna be pleasant to our, a lot of people here, but that's probably the thing we have to do now because, uh, they were donated. We do have a site for other chargers, like NBC and Benny Dietrich is managing Gary's. But we need to have a system of, a way to for the user to pay the tax. And then for us as the, or somebody to monitor getting that tax to the Department of Revenue, so. Um, I checked with the John Hart at Cornell and he didn't have a better, a good idea either about how to deal with that, so. That's being discussed. And third thing, I'll turn it over to Craig here about hosting Lynn County Public Health.
Oh, that's what, yeah. So you're gonna turn it over to me, I'm like. Uh, and I think it's because on Saturday, uh, I attended a presentation at the Mayor's Center with Lynn County Public Health. There were three members of Lynn County Public Health that showed up and presented to me and Jane Carlson. So it wasn't advertised very well, so not a lot of people showed up, but uh, as I said to the folks afterwards, uh, I sure learned a lot. And I think that it would be helpful to invite them to a legal women voters meeting or sometime when they know that they're gonna have an audience because they do so much, uh, within Lynn County to support restaurants, businesses, uh, clean water, you name it. They, they have, uh, they wear many, many hats. The last thing I'll say is that of the fifty-five people that work at Lynn County Public Health, they have researchers, scientists, social workers, teachers, you name it. Uh, it's really a, a collective group of people that work there, so.
Toward the new building, it is cutting edge.
Yeah, down the new building area.
Craig attended because I was not able to do the welcome, but I did attend a similar meeting at, uh, that was hosted at Southeastland in, in Lisbon. I'll lift it up.
Easiest welcome I've ever done.
Good job, Craig. Thanks for the. Not too much cut, uh, not too much interaction with the crowd there. Any council reports?
Craig is being mild, modest here by not talking about his work with the Childcare Solutions Group and the survey that he's put together. Uh, or if you're not prepared to talk.
No, no, I, I just say that, uh, there are half a dozen subcommittees to the, uh, Mount Vernon Lisbon childcare, some, uh, um, fact-finding group to help identify ways that we can, um, support parents and their children more readily. And one of the things that our subcommittee did, and I'm just one member of that subcommittee, uh, is we surveyed all of the for-profit LLC incorporated childcare providers in Jones Lynn, Cedar and Johnson County that had, that, that served at least fifty, uh, children. And to find out, uh, a little bit more about their budgets, their operations, their, uh, organizational methodologies, who they serve, that kind of thing. And then we asked the question also, would you, have you ever considered franchising, moving into another community? And if you have considered that, uh, what would you look for in a partner, a community partner? And so we had of the forty-five, um, childcare providers that I surveyed, that my, the subcommittee I'm on survey, ten responded back, so we got twenty percent, uh, which was great. And five of those, ten percent, said they would be interested in talking, having a conversation with people in Mount Vernon Lisbon area about franchising, so. That, is that what you were asking?
We're gonna laugh by that, yes. That was, that's progress, uh, that's, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Thanks for your service there. Uh, any other type of council committee reports? City administrators or anything to add? No. Full committee? Next to Parks and Rec, I guess? It'll come to us. Anything else? Nothing else that needs to come before this board? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Reporting stop.
Craig.
Craig.
Yeah.
Jake, lunch hour?
I recognize your name. L I N E.
L I N E. Here we are.
I didn't want to. Turn an ankle or anything.
Well, there you are. Perfect, thank you.
Not guaranteeing I'm gonna write about what you said.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you are.
Have to figure it out after. I looked through everything. Yeah, I'll be writing out because Nathan will call out, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, feel free to reach out and if you have more information or the report or anything like that.
I think there's all kinds of things that we could write more about, so.
Hopefully we'll have a little bit more information. Take that, so you have more of a plan by the end of summer.
That might be a good thing. I know I've written about it sometimes in the past, but not the last time, so. Probably, probably a good time to look at that again.
A plan and then second down cost wise, it may be a little bit more efficient to go in other directions.
Oh, well, that would be good. Save costs.
I need to figure out, so.
Okay, thank you. Figure out if I've turned this off or not. I don't think so.